Hey, everyone, and welcome. I'm calling this meeting to order, and today's invocation, we're proud to have the Reverend Joseph Arner, senior pastor from Thalia United Methodist Church. Welcome.
Gracious and loving God, we give thanks for this time that you've given us to be together as a people who represent just a portion of this city. And we ask with sincere humility that you would guide this conversation that will happen during the council meeting, that you'd make your presence known to us, and that we would make your presence known to the world through the decisions that are made tonight. We ask that you give each of our council members your spirit of cooperation and wisdom as they offer themselves in humble service to make this place that we call home better for all who live here, who visit here, and who serve here. We're mindful of those who are hurting tonight, who are grieving, who are sick, who don't have a place to call home. And we ask that we would never grow too numb to do whatever we can to improve at least one more life. And so, fill us with your peace as we seek to be instruments of that peace in this world. In your holy and precious name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And now, we offer a moment of silence for all those who paid the ultimate price for the defense of our nation, and especially recently to the Marines who tragically lost their life in an aircraft accident, our hearts and prayers go out to them and their family and loved ones. And now, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if we may have a roll call?
All present, Your Honor.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
No move.
A motion and a second.
Mayor, the vote is open. By a vote of 11 to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
And if I could have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of August 15, 2023.
Does that move?
Do we have a second?
Mayor, the vote is open. Councilman, thank you. By a vote of 11 to zero, you approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, thank you. And now, it's our pleasure as a council to have the presentations. And our first one is going to be Recognizing Disability Voting Rights Week. And Mary Mathen, are you in here? Oh, hello. And first of all, I sincerely thank you for everything you have been doing over the years. You are a marvelous, marvelous example of people giving their time and talent to most noble courses, and I thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Whereas, there are over 61 million adults with disabilities living in communities throughout the United States, and over 1.6 million adults with disabilities residing in Virginia, and over 49,000 adults with disabilities live in the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas, over 38 million Americans with disabilities are eligible voters, and whereas the disability community has a critical interest in policies and decisions made and enacted at local, state, and national levels with impact on our lives directly. And whereas, making sure people with disabilities have access to voting is essential if these policies are to meet the real needs of people with disabilities in our communities. And whereas, voting is one of the surest way for the disability community to have a say in the people and policies that impact their communities. Whereas, Rev Up Virginia, which stands for Register, Educate, and Vote, Use Your Power, is a statewide effort to build the voting power of disabled Virginians. And whereas, members of the National Disability Rights Community are organizing the Seventh Annual Disability Voting Rights Week, September 11 to 15 in 2023. And whereas, Rev Up Virginia is planning events across the Commonwealth to celebrate disability voting rights, including the Independence Center on the preceding Saturday, September 9. Therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim September 11 through 15, 2023, as Disability Voting Rights Week in Virginia Beach. And I call upon all citizens and members within the community agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Virginia Beach to also be neighbors, helping neighbors during elections for the benefit and betterment of the community so that the future generations can appreciate and further uplift our beloved city of Virginia Beach. So, Mary, I thank you, and I'm going to come down now and present you with the proclamation. Please say a couple of words, please.
I just want to thank you, thank the city of Virginia Beach, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing this proclamation. People with disabilities need to know that they need to use their voice, and the perfect way to use your voice is by voting and letting your delegates and senators know what your issues are. So, thank you for receiving this proclamation.
Thank you. Mary, how are you?
I'm good.
God bless you. Just turn this way.
Thank you.
Here, we're looking at Craig. And there we go. There's Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me turn around and take a look. We are indeed a city of heroes. Mr. Bellucci, it's an honor that you have to present a most worthy recognition to a great landmark in our city.
Thank you, Mayor. And as the representative of District 3, located right in the heart and the center of Virginia Beach, it's my privilege and pleasure to represent a district that contains probably the most iconic and unique and special landmarks, beloved landmarks, in Virginia Beach, in our great city, and that is Mount Trashmore. Mount Trashmore is celebrating its 50th, believe it or not, 50th anniversary this year. I have the privilege of reading a resolution to commemorate that very special anniversary, and also to welcome an incredible team from Parks and Recs. So, please join us at the podium while I read this. Whereas, Mount Trashmore Park opened in 1973 as the first landfill-to-park conversion in the world. And whereas, the park was the brainchild of Roland E. Dorer, the Director of State Department of Health, Insect, and Vector Control in the mid-1960s, as a creative solution to the growing municipal landfill. And whereas, at that time, municipal waste was often disposed of in trenches, but Virginia Beach being at sea level and our water table close to the surface, space was limited, so the plan was to build up. And whereas, the last trash was dumped at the site in 1971, and then, over the next five years, 640,000 tons of trash were transformed into a mountain at the cost of approximately $1.1 million. And whereas, officials originally planned to name the mountain Gull Dorer Park, but during construction, local citizens nicknamed it Mount Trashmore in reference to Mount Rushmore in South Dakota. And whereas, the smaller hill next to the main mountain is named Encore Hill and is half the size of Mount Trashmore. And whereas, two lakes were created during the park's construction as dirt was removed to build the mountain. Lake Trashmore, located along Edwin Drive, is the larger, deeper lake and has fresh water. And Lake Windsor, located along South Boulevard, is the smaller lake and has brackish water and feeds into Thalia Creek. And whereas, the north side of the mountain, which faces Interstate 264, features an iconic 35-foot Virginia Beach city seal made of recycled foam to welcome residents and other visitors. And whereas, in the early days, the park hosted soapbox derbies, competitive water skiing, fishing tournaments, wind sailing, and paddleboat rentals. And whereas, a 24,000-square-foot skate park opened in 2003 and expanded in 2006 to include a 13.5-foot-tall vert ramp and has hosted numerous professional skateboarders, including Tony Hawk. And whereas, the park's iconic playground, Kids Cove, opened in 1993 and was built by thousands of volunteers over a five-day period. And the project's concept and fundraising efforts were spearheaded by the Junior Women's Club of Virginia Beach. And whereas, the fully renovated 26,000-square-foot Kids Cove opened in 2010 and features a pour-and-play surface, barrier-free entry, wheelchair-friendly swings, making it accessible to children of all abilities. And whereas, the next project on the horizon for the park is the installation of a hillside playground near Kids Cove, which is slated to open in late summer of 2024. And whereas, in 2007, in recognition of the 15th anniversary of the city of Virginia Beach's sister cities' relationship with Miyazaki City, Japan, Miyazaki's Eco Park and Mount Trashmore became officially sister parks. And whereas, Mount Trashmore is the most visited park in Virginia Beach. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council hereby commemorates and celebrates the 50th anniversary of Mount Trashmore and urges all residents to enjoy the park's many amenities. And I'd just like to say just a few brief words in addition to that. I had the privilege of going on a historical tour of Mount Trashmore Park with an incredible team of Parks and Recs professionals in July. And I learned so much about the park that I didn't know. And I encourage anyone who's interested in Virginia Beach history to participate in a tour like that, and I hope we'll be able to offer it in the future. But what I already knew, that so many other people know, is Virginia Beach is a beloved, iconic landmark park. It's visited by over a million visitors a year, mostly residents, who just enjoy all of the beautiful amenities. It's uniquely Virginia Beach. And I'll just finally just conclude my remarks by saying this: I love Mount Trashmore and its beautiful history because someone, one day, looked at this pile of trash and saw something incredibly special. They saw a space where people, community members, residents, not visitors, Virginia Beach residents, can connect with each other, where young people could play, where people could fish, people could fly kites, people could run and exercise and be part of a neighborhood and be part of a community, all that when they looked at a trash dump. So, I just have to think about if we could all be a little bit more like that person who looked at Mount Trashmore and saw a beautiful community park in a municipal waste dump, imagine what we could do with all the other great things we have in this great city. So, congratulations to Mount Trashmore, and most of all, congratulations to the team of professionals and volunteers and community members who have made this park thrive for 50 years. And Mr. Kirschman, I'd welcome you to say any remarks.
Sure. Thank you very much, Councilman Bellucci, members of council. Yes, Mount Trashmore is by far our most popular park. I tell the story all the time, when I accepted this job around six years ago and made the move here, and I told people around the country, I said, "Oh, I'm going to be the director of Virginia Beach." The first thing they would say to me is, "You're going to Mount Trashmore." It is an extremely well-known park throughout the country, if not the world, because it was so unique at the time. Virginia Beach has a history of being innovative, and this was the first landfill converted to a public park in the world. And that innovation continues today. We saw just a couple of years ago, when we built a 30,000-foot skate park on top of a 5-million-gallon wastewater tank at Woodstock Park. We're seeing it right now as we convert a 100-acre golf course into a stormwater park that's going to have multiple wins and multiple outcomes for everybody. And I think we'll see, of course, in the future, when Rudy Loop gets redeveloped into a public space. All this goes to say that it doesn't happen without tremendous public support and that of the body here that has supported this system for over 50 years. I want to thank Deputy Director Shirley Dodler for being here, our Park Recreation Commissioner, Hugh Tierney, and of course, our mascot, Parks and Recs. Thank you, everybody.
But thank you all very much, and you know, some very, very well-deserved accolades. Now, go to public hearings. Number one, change the central absentee precinct location for the November 2023 and March 2024 elections to building 23 within the municipal center. Any speakers?
No speaker, sir.
Okay. Next, lease of city property, 2089 Indian River Road, residential dwelling to Highlight Harper Kraus.
There are no speakers, sir.
And last one, lease of city property, 1,143 feet of gravel parking area along Ocean View Avenue to B&amp;J's Limited of Virginia.
One speaker, Martha Thoreau.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Martha Thoreau. I live in Bay Lake Pines. I also own a piece of property at the oceanfront. I'm in Bay Lake Pines, that's District Number 9. I've been there since 1955, on and off, as my father was the site salesman for that area. I grew up in that area, and I played at Chesapeake Beach, where Bowie is located. And it used to be, y'all will enjoy this, hopefully, the trivia is, that is the original Chick's Beach. That is where the Chick's hot dog stand was and where people could go down there and play. It was a cute name, and so people think it's cute to name every piece of land along Chesapeake Bay there Chick's Beach. But that is the original Chick's Beach. As you know, I follow local politics pretty closely, and I saw this item, and I didn't think much of it at first, especially when I saw the $2,000, but I thought it was $2,000 a month that you were going to rent the city property, the city easement, to Bowie. By the way, I also knew Stephen Michaels back in the 60s, a nice man. I don't think he'd remember me, but I remember him as being a nice man. So, I looked at it closer as I looked at the agenda, and the thing that jumped out at me, before 2018, this property, there was no record of it being leased. It was an encroachment. They were using it for Bowie, for the patrons and guests and what have you. And he also owns and leases out of valet, and I understand, charges sometimes a large lot to the west of his establishment. But this property in question looks like it would hold six to seven to eight cars. The picture shows six cars, but let's say seven. And it wasn't $2,000 a year, it was $2,000, I mean, $2,000 a month. It's $2,000 a year that the city is leasing this property to this gentleman, business, and less than a dollar a day. There's no record or no information in the item saying how much we used to lease it for, but it was a portion we leased it for, and now, they want the entire gravel spot, and again, $2,000 a year. So, I talked to my councilman before, not in relationship to this, but we were talking about parking at the beach and bays, and he even said how difficult it was for him to park nearby to take his children to the beach. This, again, was before this time. Since then, our councilman, Mr. Schulman, has provided a porta potty with discretionary income that was left over in the budget to put a porta potty down there by Bowie, and now, this parking spot and such. And I was thinking, you know, when you're in politics, you get favors and such, and I'm sure that Mr. Schul-
Thank you, Martha. Appreciate it.
Well, let's make it reasonable for all citizens, employees, city employees, to let them have a parking spot at the beach. It's about three minutes. I got 13 seconds, Bobby. It says 17. Oh, I'm over. Okay. Now, I got to go on to the next one, right?
Okay, not yet.
Okay.
Okay, but thank you for coming. Appreciate it. All righty. And that takes care of the public hearings, and now, the script for the speakers before the consent agenda. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on any single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this for all of us is strive for civility and respect. Okay, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, Martha Thoreau. She has signed up on K-24, L-2, and L-4. And then, we have one additional speaker who has signed up just for L-3.
Okay.
I'm sorry, L-4's been pulled, though, correct? So, it'll be K-24, L-2, and that's it for right now.
Okay.
L-4's been pulled, so it'll be heard separately.
So, this is the Franklin Johnston one I'm speaking on?
Number 24, which is the tip fund, and then Franklin Johnston, yes.
Okay. Feel a little bit of Barbara Messner in me right now. Ordinance, on the 24, the $1,164,299, that amount was included in the $10,145,169 that you're bumping over into the next fiscal year. Of that $1,164,299 was going to be given to this management company, and it's going to be shifted over to the 2024 budget. We've already given those people a lot of money, and I have read the lease, I've reviewed the lease, and I would ask that this body, I know it's deferred indefinitely, but the tip fund doesn't want it, people at the beach don't want to pay for it, I don't want to pay for it. I'm tired of my taxes going up for all the shiny new things in the city that does nothing to benefit me whatsoever. The parking there is full all the time, they're making money hand over fist, somebody is, but it's not the citizens of Virginia Beach. The restaurants and hotels are making out, everybody's happy at the resort, but if they want them, then they can pay for them. So, I'm moving on because I'm trying to get it in within the right amount of time.
L-2 is Franklin Johnston.
All right. On that issue, I'm going to read to you a letter that was sent to y'all dated July 13 of this year from your Transition Area Inter facility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee. And it was signed by Lisa Hartman, the chairperson. And I'm paraphrasing this because I'm trying to get it in under three minutes, and so, I haven't taken any content, but I am paraphrasing. And it was addressed to the Virginia Beach Planning Commission, and then, Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Planning Commission. At our July 6-
Excuse me, Martha, you have six minutes altogether. A cumulative time of six minutes for all the items.
Right.
So, just take your time. You don't have just the three minutes.
You're kicking me down as you're listening to you.
Okay, no, no, just to let you know you have more time.
I'm sorry, okay, whatever.
Okay, keep going.
Okay, I'm doing my best, okay? And you're taking my time. At our July 6, 2023 committee meeting, the Franklin Johnston Group presented a plan for zoning change from agricultural one to apartments 18 on property that lies within the ITA and the ACUs. After carefully considering the options and community impacts, our committee has concerns regarding the extreme density and impacts on the precedent it sets for future development. Based on the information provided, the committee recommends denial of this application based on the following: Nearly half of this property lies within the Navy's ACUs, limiting development to one unit per 15 acres. The density, 27-plus per acre, far more than the requested 18 units, and exceeds recommendations for this area. This increased density can have devastating impacts on properties in the area currently zoned agricultural. This high density will set a precedent due to the proximity that can have devastating implications on nearby stable neighborhoods. The Princess Anne Corridor Study explicitly identifies the intent to protect the view shed for motorists traveling on Princess Anne Road near the courthouse. The four-story structures will be a massive change from the single-family homes on the adjacent- from the single-family homes on the adjacent agricultural properties. The height of the buildings is nearly double the intended height for properties in this area. Neighboring property owners are concerned for many reasons. This committee encourages the city planning commission to deny the advancement of this request. We request that the developer amend the current plan to reflect the desired intent of publicly vetted documents, comply with density limitations, and reduce the height to be within the limitations to protect the view shed from Princess Anne Road. For me, in closing, my ask is that you honor the recommendations of your committee and hold the developer, who's redoing all this, to a higher standard here. After all, the citizens are still paying for this new and improved courthouse and city hall area, and plastic boxes don't fit the image, in my opinion. And I've got one minute, right? Can we pause and let me catch my breath for a moment? The final thing is the DeStef purchase of the property on London-
That was polled, I believe?
That one's been polled, so you'll be speaking on that separately.
I'm speaking on this separately?
On that one separately, yes. We'll call you back up for three minutes. That's pulled from the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, we have one other speaker, Michael Resniak. He signed up to speak on L-3, but that's the only speaker for L-3, so I was, would you like to leave that on consent?
Okay. Yeah, come on up.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. This property that, I guess, is up for whatever it is, the application or the applicant has, how do I want to say it, hasn't been very truthful in the use of the property. They've used it prior to November of 2022, prior to, I would say, probably 2021. Since this person has occupied this property, they have had gambling machines in there. They have had bike races, dog fights, not dog fights, but there have been pit bulls in the property, which I owned adjacent and several others around it. Even in the pictures, if you look at it, that's in your report. The property next to it is the one I own currently. They park on my property, do not ask permission. They put their dumpster on my property, do not ask permission. They have a food truck that comes there, sells food, no license, no nothing, without my permission or anyone's permission. I don't think the planning commission has put enough research into this. They say that the applicant applied for this in November 2022. No. I complained because zoning and, I guess, whatever it was, neighborhood preservation, kept calling me about vehicles being parked there, trash being there. I went there, I met the person, who was very rude. I told him, I said, "This trash is not mine. The vehicles parked here or abandoned are not mine. Tires, they are not mine. Who are they? It is the applicant's. He has been selling mopeds." Other than that, I think that the council should maybe either table this matter or deny it and do better research on this applicant and the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Did you want to say something? Yep. Okay. Yeah, excuse me, we got a council person like to ask you a question, if you can come back.
Hello, I'm Councilwoman Ross Hammond for District Four. And did you bring some of what you were just saying to the planning commission?
I was unfortunately on vacation, and I received this, again, it's my fault as a citizen of Virginia Beach or a resident. I don't follow city planning commission, all the governmental stuff, like the previous person before me, which I should be more like her. I did not know of the previous one. When I found out about it, it was too late, but I did get this one, and I am here.
Okay, was it used prior to that for any other automated? Because I passed by the area, it was quiet on the weekend, but-
Forgive me, I didn't understand your question.
Has that same property been used for other things, other automated areas?
You mean other automotive?
Yes.
It has been, but illegally. Each time I have complained, and each time they come out, I don't know, a slap on the wrist or whatever, or I get a false promise of, well, we kind of gave the zoning, so 200 Dorset Avenue was changed from B2 to I1. Yet during, I want to say, early 2000s, maybe late 90s, someone in the zoning department signed off on this piece of paper. It made it a B2 or gave them a used condition permit to open up a car dealership. When I called and confronted zoning about it, they told me I was incorrect. I said, "I've read that city plan. I know it. I own properties there. I know what it is." Again, they made me a promise, said, "Once this business terminates or this person passes away, it will never be." So we'll see if it keeps it. But no, it has been used, but it's not zoned for it. Originally, it was a windows and carpet. I believe the gentleman worked out of there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're discussing a potential, you know, consent for deferral on this.
Dr. Ross Hammond would like to, we can leave it on consent, but put it for deferral until September 19th.
Yes, to give me a chance to do a further investigation.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Yep.
To the consent agenda? Okay. Under Ordinance and Resolutions, number one, the ordinance to amend City Code Section 10-1 regarding exchange the central absentee location to Building 23 for the November 2023 and March 2024 elections. Number two is the ordinance to amend City Code Sections 5311, 5501, and 5520 through 5529 regarding animals. Number three is a resolution to add student members to the Open Space Advisory Committee. Requested by City Council. Number four is a resolution to approve the FY 2024 performance contract with the Commonwealth of Virginia Ray Mental Health Developmental and Substance Use Disorder Services and accept appropriate and transfer state funds. Number five, the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions, Ray closing an improved portion of right-of-way adjacent to 204A, 204B, and 20275th Street. Number six, the ordinance to extend the date to satisfying the conditions, Ray closing an improved portion of right-of-way adjacent to 7406 Atlantic Avenue. Number seven is the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions, Ray closing portions of unimproved right-of-way adjacent to 20375th Street. The following ordinance is to extend the date for satisfying the conditions, Ray closing a portion of unimproved right-of-way adjacent to 8. Number 20575th Street, 9, 20975th Street, 10, 21175th Street, 11, 21375th Street, 12, 215A and 215B75th Street, 13, 21775th Street, 14 is 7500 Atlantic Avenue, 15 is 208A and 208B76th Street, 16 is 21076th Street, 17 is 21476th Street, 18 is 216A and 216B76th Street, 19 is 218A and 218B76th Street. Number 20 is the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions, Ray closing a 334-square-foot portions of unimproved right-of-way adjacent to the rear of 31745th Street. Number 21 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Treasure Canal, located at the rear of 2240 Windward Shore Drive. Ray construction and maintain a boat lift, wood dock, excuse me, and a portion of a wood pier in District 8. Number 22 is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned property known as Lake Holly, located in the rear of 703 Arctic Avenue. Ray construct and maintain a vinyl bulkhead and a timber pier, District 5. Number 23 is the ordinance to carry forward and appropriate $10,145, no, $10,145,169 to the FY 2023-24 operating budget ray purposes previously approved in FY 2022-23. Number 24 is the ordinance to appropriate $1,164,299 from the Tourism Investment Program Fund balance to the FY 2023 Convention and Visitors Bureau operating budget ray conditional payment to ESM VBSC LLC, and we are recommending indefinite deferral for that.
Okay, open a public hearing on planning.
Number one is SHJ Construction Group LLC, Atlantic Shores Baptist Church for modification of contingentous conditions, Ray can religious use and conditional use permit, Ray a car washing facility at 1861 Kempsville Road, District 7. Recommending for withdrawal. Number two is the Franklin Johnsons Group Management and Development LLC, Ades Vandenmilt Revocable Trust, and Etta Al William E. N. Phyllis H. Sawyer Keelingwood Apartments LLC for conditional change of zoning from Ag 1 and Ag 2 Agriculture Districts to conditional A18 Apartment District with workforce housing overlay district and modification of proffers, Ray expand and add 176 additional units for a portion of 2737 Princess Anne Road and eastern adjoining parcel 2520 Ale Nicole Circle, District 2. And number three, this is going to be deferred till September 19th. Speed Gears LLC Covington Family Trust for conditional use permit, Ray automobile repair garage at 212 Dorset Avenue, District 4. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, the vote is, yep, Sabrina.
We need a second.
I just wanted to make sure I could have comments on K-1, as I mentioned during the workshop.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Do you want me to do that now?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Sure, sure. So I wanted to, for K-1, I wanted to just clarify, because I did get some calls and talked to a few people who were concerned about this ordinance to amend the code and to change the central absentee location building to Building 23. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that that modification would not impact early voting, number one. Number two, that it would not impact their ability to vote absentee ballot at Building 14 or any other location. And so I did ask the representative from the registrar's office to confirm that publicly here tonight as well. Would you mind, can he come up and confirm that?
Yes, you can. Welcome.
Thank you. Christian Logan, again, the Deputy Director of Elections here in the City of Virginia Beach, and I am going to confirm your concerns there, which there are none. This is just simply a move to facilitate the space needed for processing the absentee ballots when they return. So there is no change in any of the areas in which people will cast their ballots.
And it will not impact early voting?
Does not impact early voting. That will still be held at Building 14, as well as satellite locations throughout the area.
Thank you for confirming that.
Sure, no problem.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Okay, at this point, the vote is open.
Mayor, we need a second.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. The vote is open.
All righty.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
The only item is four, right? Okay, now, item number four under Planning, London Bridge Development LLC for conditional use permit, Ray Bulk Storage at 130 London Bridge Road, District 6.
We have one speaker, Martha Thoreau.
You're welcome back.
Thank you. It's tougher juggling this, as you can imagine. I was at the Planning Commission meeting of August 9th when Senator Bill DeStef was there to speak to the purchase of his property under the LLC of London Bridge Development from the City of Virginia Beach to the VBDA. I was surprised when reading through the agenda package to see, for today, to see that the minutes for that hearing of that item referenced, or Senator DeStef, as unknown speaker. At one point, someone said, "Good to see you, Senator," but other than that, the person was not named, as he was the representative for the property and the request for conditional use permit from office space to industrial, I'd say, for the bulk storage. Was in the news recently that he purchased this property, I think, for 1.2 million, whereas the VBDA bought it or the city bought it for 6 million. It was a bad investment on the city's part, and it's been explained away, not by him, but by others, that it was a BRAC thing. And I, my career's been in real estate, and so I followed that. I've been licensed since '77, and was like looking at it from investment standpoint and wondering why the VBDA keeps on giving our money, again, my taxpayers' dollars, your taxpayers' dollars, to certain people for investment purposes. And it was a bad investment, 6 million to 1. something million dollars, and now it's going to be bulk storage with Dominion Power paying a lease amount. And I'm sure probably Dominion Power is paying a pretty penny to store that property. Why wasn't the city the one to rent to Dominion Power? And how long before did VBDA know that Dominion was going to need that bulk space? And were there any alternatives? Which kind of brings me to the place of, I also heard our auditor, Mr. Ramais, or Maes, speak to the fact that he is answerable to you, that he doesn't have to wait for the city manager, the city manager doesn't ask him to do things, you do, and that you could ask him to do certain audits. So as a citizen of Virginia Beach, I would very much welcome an audit into the BRAC purchases that have been done as a result of trying to protect Oceana and how many losses we've taken, how much we've spent, and how much we've taken in losses. Because another thing that the senator on a meeting I witnessed online was kind of boasting about buying 37 of these BRAC properties. So I'm kind of thinking, well, who's getting left out?
Thank you, Martha. Appreciate it.
Time's up.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Okay, Worth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to defer this ordinance request until September 19th.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second on that?
At the request of the applicant.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer. Okay.
The vote is open. Councilmember Taylor, may I have your vote, please?
Madam Clerk, is this to defer?
To defer to September 19th, yes. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, this item, this application has been deferred to September 19th.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, I think we're ready for appointments now.
Mr. Mayor, the Collective Bargaining Task Force, Dennis Free, Jake Jacox, Brian Luciano, Max Gonamo, James Wood, Lisa Turner, Terry Green, Steve Cover, Mike Imprevento, Rick Broyles, Brad Belton. The Housing Advisory Board, Brian Hackney. The Virginia Beach Cannabis Advisory Task Force, Brandon Hackney. The Wetlands Board, Benjamin McFarland, and I think we're supposed to be reappointing Cindy Hawks White, too.
That was at the next meeting.
She's a reappointment.
Whatever you'd like.
Cindy Hawks White.
The vote is open.
Is that it? Okay.
Councilmember Henley, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, great. Is at this point, is there any unfinished business? New business? Okay, we are adjourned to open mic.